Evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Town of Milford. Monday, September 10, 2012. The first item that we have on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. The next item that we have is the approval of meeting minutes for August 20, 2012.
Move, Mr. Chairman.
That's the regular meeting minutes, right, not the executive?
Well, it can be, if you'd like to separate it.
I'd like to separate them, only, and I'd like to bring up the meeting minutes of the executive session in executive session.
Okay, so why don't we hold on the executive session meeting minutes, and the motion is been made and seconded to approve the regular session meeting minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, any opposed? That, too, is unanimous. Citizen participation, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board, not otherwise scheduled? Okay, let's move on to our public hearings, and the first one we have is with Sue Clark to talk to us about the community development grant block project for this upcoming year. Sue?
Thank you, Brian. Well, as you're aware, back in December, the town had submitted an application to the Department of Housing and Community Development Office for $800,000. We received $500,000. We were the last community, again, to be funded, and what we got was the money that was left over. So, as a result of that, they reduced our award for our infrastructure project, and they eliminated our housing rehab program. So, that left us with $375,000 for our infrastructure program, and $125,000 for program delivery and general administration. So, when we found out all this was going on, we, myself, Scott Christofully, Mike Santora, and the project engineer, had a meeting to determine what we could do with this money. The original estimate for this project was $625,000, and all we had was $375,000. So, we met, and, you know, initially, we were thinking, should we eliminate one of the streets? The project is for Church Street, Bancroft Park, Draper Park, and Bancroft Ave, up in the Church Street neighborhood. So, when we sat down and we talked about it, Scott Christofully thought that maybe if we took some things out of the bid, we might be able to get the whole project done. And if we took some things out, he might be able to get them done a lot less money than I would be able to. So, we put the project out to bid with a base bid in four alternates, and those four alternates were the ones that Scott thought he would be able to get done. So, we went in thinking, you know, the bid, the prices have been coming in really good. If we can get the whole project done with the money we have, we'll do it. We'll add alternates until we run out of money, and then Scott would finish it. So, we did put the project out to bid, and we had a bid opening on last Wednesday, and we did receive seven bids. Sixteen contractors took out the bid package, and we did receive seven proposals. And for base bid, the ranges went from $371,000 to $480,000. Low bid was submitted by a contractor from West Bridgewater called IW Harding. We went through, and we checked his references. Everything checked out fine. Met with Scott Christofully, and he does think that he can get the project done. Originally, Scott was going to contribute $125,000 to this project, and he thinks that it might cost him a little bit more now because the cost of materials has gone up, but he does feel that he can finish this project for us. So, I do think that between the the community development block grant and the highway surveyor's contribution, we will get this whole project done. So, right now, I'm recommending that we do award base bid contract pending the environmental clearance from the Department of Housing and Community Development to IW Harding Construction Company.
Sue, so the housing rehab component, that's been taken off the board?
It's done, right.
Okay, what were you targeting in terms of units for that? It wasn't a big number?
No, it was between three and four units.
Okay, all right. So, you think by this, this process, using the base bid of the outside contractor, and then the highway department for, I guess, the alternate items, you'll still be able to do all of the roadwork and drainage?
I do. I think we'll be able to get it done.
Aspect of the project that you had intended to do?
Yeah, yes, I do. We do have some money that came into the office from recapturing funds that were put out for housing rehab. The way that program works is if the homeowner sells their home, we get a piece of that back. So, right now, we have about $28,000 in reserve, and we do have clearance to spend that on this project if we need to.
Okay.
So, because if you look at the numbers, we don't have much of a contingency. We don't have police detail in this number, but I think between Scott and I, we'll be able to get the project done.
Okay, good. Dean?
Yeah, Brian. We certainly want to thank the highway surveyor for volunteering. He's always been right next to you.
Absolutely. He's been really, really supportive.
And Sue, the reason why we got, we received $300,000 less go to other communities, or the money wasn't there, or what do you think?
Well, you know, it wasn't our application. We once again scored a perfect application. We couldn't have gotten any more points. But Milford is at the end of the list now, and we got what was left for money, and...
There was reduced funding anyway, wasn't there, from what I understand?
Yeah, there was, yeah.
There was reduced funding, I thought dramatically.
Well, I think the year before, it was reduced even more, but last year, we didn't even get funded.
Yeah.
So, you know, this year, we were lucky to get what we got, and I think it's, you know, the writing's on the wall. I think Milford has just about tapped itself out. We did receive our revised community-wide need scores today, and we're two points lower than we were. So, I mean, it's, other communities out there are much more needy than we are, and I think they're the ones that are going to be receiving this money.
And even with that, I mean, we've been very fortunate. We've had millions of dollars come in. How much do you think the...
Probably around 13 million in 20 years. So, we've done very well.
That's incredible.
We've done really, really well. But I just think, you know, Milford could be running out of luck on this one.
No, thanks, Sue. Nice job, once again.
Thank you.
Bill?
Sue, just a quick question. Do you think that the scoring that the other communities receive is purely objective, or is it sometimes influenced by other factors such as representation or any of...
Oh, you know...
I just don't know how the scoring works, so...
The way the scoring works is, you know, you, all the questions that they ask are, you have to meet the criteria. We met everything, so we couldn't have gotten any more points.
So, we're meeting the criteria, but...
Completely.
And what is it that keeps others, other towns' scores higher?
It's our community-wide need score, because that's the base. That's what they start everything at. So, Milford's is 24, and other communities are going in with 30s, 30, you know, 31, 32s.
Right. I guess the question I'm asking is, have you looked at those communities with 30s, 32s, and looked at what it is that offsets ours to theirs, what the major differences are?
Well, the community-wide need score is, is done by, it's Milford's unemployment rate. It's things that are out of our control. It's nothing that we put into it. The state determines what that number is. It's the unemployment rate, it's, it's the poverty level, you know, it's, it's a whole mixture of different criteria. So, it's nothing that my office has control of. It's the demographics of the town at this point.
With our needs going down and other communities going up, that's where that scores...
You know, it's a good thing. Milford's doing better than, you know, a lot of other communities.
Right.
But unfortunately, when you're looking for these grant funds, it's not such a good thing.
And as Brian and Dino were alluding to, I don't want to miss the opportunity to say how successful you have been in the past in making sure that you help get the amount of funds that we did receive over the years, the 13 million that you were talking about. With respect to Church Street and Bancroft Park area, to me, it's, it's very, very clear, and it's, it's clear to anybody who travel, has traveled down that road or taken a ride around there, its need is very high. So, so I appreciate the fact that that priority is high for you and high for the highway surveyors as well. So, I can't think of a better need to support.
It's going to be another one of, you know, another great project like Prospect Heights was.
Right, granted, there are other streets in need, but that area...
It's in need.
Yeah. So, I'm supportive of the, the concept, and provided the other members are make a motion.
You want to motion a little better?
Yeah, entertain a motion?
Yes, motion.
Okay, motion made. Second?
Yeah, I'll second. We're supporting the lowest bid, the...
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I have it right.
IW Harding.
Yeah, IW Harding, 354 Pleasant Street, West Bridgewater.
Yeah, the base bid of approximately $372,000.
Yeah.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Discussion. Mark, did you want to say something?
Before you take a vote, I just had a question through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Sue, as part of the original proposal for CDGV, was Scott's participation involved then, too?
Yes, it was.
For the same amount of money?
For the same amount of money. The project was $625,000. We applied for $500 for the project, and Scott's contribution was going to be $125,000.
All right, thank you.
All set? Okay. All those in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. Sue, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck with everything, and if you need anything else, you know, just come back and let us know.
Nice work, Sue.
Thanks, Sue.
All right, watch out for the cord here. We got very high-tech graphics. The next item that we have is a presentation on the Milford Pond Restoration Project. Tom Jenkins, our engineer from GZA, is here, and I will turn it over to my colleague, Dino de Batlameus, who is Chair of the Milford Pond Restoration Committee, to provide us an overview. Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin, I just want to introduce some of the members of the Restoration Commission Committee who are here. Donna Topping, Vincenzo Velastro, Fred Endriati, Paul Tanguso, Jimmy Marcello, Reno Deluzio, Will Kincaid, and I believe Paul Mazakelli is upstairs. Wonderful committee that worked very hard. Just to summarize, Brian and Bill, the Town of Milford began a study of Milford Pond in 1979. Another feasibility was completed for the pond in 1986 by the EPA, and both studies recommended dredging. The present Restoration Committee was established by the Board of Selectmen in late 1991 after 25 residents of the pond and Plains area attended a meeting respectfully asking the Board to take action in addressing the negative effects created by the pond and to try to restore the pond for boating and fishing for the residents. The Restoration Committee has worked very diligently and cautiously over many years with many professionals, town and state officials, to develop a reasonable, cost-effective, affordable plan in identifying a scientifically proven method dredging to address the six to eight goals of the pond project, which we will get into. Over the years, I want to thank a lot of people. Board of Selectmen, past members and present members, Brian and, and Bill. The town meeting members for their support in the past. The Finance Committee, Congressman Richard Neal, and the U.S. Corps of Engineers, Farmer State Rep. Parenti, State Senator Richard Moore, State Representative John Fernandez. The window of opportunity will be closing in the near future for this environmental initiative, and the town has to decide in the near future if the dredging project will occur. Many people, I think, realize that our environment, protecting our water, preserving our lakes and ponds are vital to a community's well-being and will enable future generations to enjoy the benefits. So, at this time, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to, as you said, Tom Jenkins, the engineer for GZA.
Great, thank you. Tom, welcome. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Good to see you back.
Good to see y'all. We had to reboot the computer, so it's going to take a minute.
Okay, all right. So, what do you got?
You need...
You gotta work the clock a little now.
I didn't have any jokes.
All right, you got any, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, you could correct the last name. It's Harrogan.
What did I say? Okay.
Jeez, that wasn't a nice call, Donna. You're right, Donna.
Well, Donna, you have so many. I'm sorry.
Well, we have, we have before us, we have a Milford Pond Restoration Project summary that I thought was very good. It ran three pages, you know, gave a nice history of the project, the Army Corps of Engineer involvement, the project goals, and then also project funding and a budget, along with a schedule. And then we also have a printout, I guess, of a, of a PowerPoint presentation, which has a lot of similar information in it.
The updated.
I assume, is this, is this what's going to be part of the presentation?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
With a few updates, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so that's, that's what we've been presented. Of course, you know, we've been involved in various aspect of the project at various times, depending upon progress. So, I'm just talking here, Tom, so as soon as you're ready, we're ready to go. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Bill, you were ready to sing, right?
Get the stretch.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't want that to happen.
You're all set.
Very good. All right, well, thank you very much. Again, my name is Tom Jenkins, and I'm a civil engineer, professional engineer with GZA. I've been involved with the Town of Milford since 1994, and have been working on this project since 1998. And it's not unusual for, to see a lake or pond restoration project to take this long, and I have been involved in a number of them, and that's one of our niche specialties in Massachusetts and Connecticut. And I, I tell lake and pond restoration committees, when I first get involved with them, that it takes a real dedicated effort to get this type of thing done, because it's, it takes no money whatsoever or effort to have a pond get filled in with sediment and weeds, but it takes a lot of money and effort to get it removed and get, get the lake or pond restored. This is testing my patience, I see.
Sometimes you can slide that down, the whole box.
It'll go away in a minute.
All right.
Click on the PowerPoint screen behind it.
Any other...
Got control.
It's looking for... It'll go away in a minute.
It's trying to get on the network back at work.
So, the town has been working on this for longer than, since 1998. It goes, goes back much further than that. And on my slideshow, when I get started with it, I want to point out that in the bottom right-hand corner, and you guys may not be able to see it, but the people in the, in the audience can, in the bottom right-hand corner, there'll be a little number, and not to be confused with the page number on the, on the left.
Let me kill that.
Yeah, kill that, would you please? And the little number in the right-hand corner...
There it is. The presentation is going to take perhaps as long as the project.
Well, thank you.
Thank you again, Al.
Good job, Al. Al, you better not leave yet.
We need somebody in house right there.
Don't leave, yeah.
On the left, from 2010, is an aerial photograph of Milford Pond, and you, you can't even see it because of all of the dense weed growth and algae and floating plants. You have to go back to 2001, and the only reason why you can see the pond, the outline of the pond in 2001 is because of the time of year. Over here, you can tell from the other vegetation that photograph was probably taken in the summer, and this one was taken either in the late fall or in the early spring, which is about the only time you ever see any open, open water at the pond. Now, the pond was constructed in 1939 by the Cedar Swamp Pond Dam, and again, this little number in the right-hand corner here is the number of months before the present. And so, 1939 was 882 months ago, and it's interesting to kind of watch the progression of events. But Cedar Swamp Pond Dam was constructed in 1939 by the state and the county. It was a public works administration project, and it flooded Cedar Swamp Pond to a depth of about five or six feet. And you see that a lot throughout New England. A lot of the lakes and ponds that we work on were, were constructed in the early parts of the 1900s, and they were flooded, they, they took a low area, like a swampy area, and they flooded them to a depth of about five or six feet. And that worked pretty good for a number of years, a number of decades. And all reports are that in the 40s through the 60s, Cedar Swamp Pond, Milford Pond, was a recreational paradise. These pictures, there's probably people in this room right now that are somewhere in some of these pictures, but boating, fishing, froze over nice and solid in the wintertime for winter sports, swimming, all kinds of activities were supported by Milford Pond, and I think it was a real community asset. But later, in the late 60s and early 70s, things started to change because of all of the nutrients and the sediment that were washing into the pond, which is a natural process, but it's exacerbated by activities of man, primarily just land development, and then also fertilization of lawns and that type of thing. The Town Commission, the first study that I'm aware of for the reclamation or restoration of Cedar Swamp Pond in 1979 is conducted by Carr Research Laboratories, and I, I think Professor Carr is still teaching up at WPI, but he's done a number of studies for a number of lakes and ponds in Massachusetts. Bottom line is, the recommendation out of that study was, you need to dredge the pond. You need to get some more depth to it. You've got sedimentation coming in, and we need to make it deeper. In 1986, there was an EPA-funded study that was a very detailed diagnostic study of the health of the lake, and then also a feasibility study was included in that in terms of how do you bring that lake back to what it could be, what it should be, what people want it to be. Bottom line on that report, the recommendation was dredging. Shortly after this was when, as Dino mentioned, when the Restoration Committee was formed in the, in the early 1990s, after a meeting of Board of Selectmen attended by a bunch of residents, concerned residents. In 1998, this is when I, I first became involved in the project. The town got a grant from the state. It was administered by the Department of Environmental Management, which is now called Conservation and Recreation. They're the ones that do all the parks and all the dredging of our harbors and waterways. And the Town of Milford hired the company that I worked for, Bay State Environmental, which is still the company I worked for. It was just purchased by a bigger company. And the task at hand was to design and permit a dredging program, in other words, to implement the, the recommendations of those two prior studies. And in 2000, we, we presented, after meeting with the committee a number of times, and hearing what the goals were and what the desires were, we, we came, put forward a dredging program for a certain portion of the, of the pond. The entire pond itself is about 120 acres, and we identified, working with the committee, 30, 45 acres. We started out a little bit smaller, but after meeting with the FinCon, we expanded that up to 45 acres. Just to give you bearings here, this is Plains Park over here, Rosenfeld Park, this is the dam in this location here, this is the pool, Clark Island, Dilla Street coming around like this, and the Charles River coming in here. This is Louisa Lake. It flows in, and of course, the Charles River flows out and underneath Main Street. The program is 45 acres, 400,000 cubic yards. Now, that is a lot of material. I've only got one job that I've worked on in the last 25 years that's bigger than that. It's a, a project being undertaken by the State of Connecticut in Berlin, Connecticut. It's 700,000 cubic yards, and it's been, it's been under construction for 15 years. All right? Now, the state is taking their sweet time about it and chipping away at it very, very slowly.
What do you mean, under construction? It's...
It's been dredging. Yeah, dredging for, and they, they do a season of dredging, and then they, five years later, they do another season, and they're not really behind it like they should be. The price tag in 2000 that we ident, we identified was 5.3 million for this, for this program. Okay, so the, the town, working with us, we initiated the permitting process, and as you can imagine, involving a water resource, the permitting for a project like this is extremely onerous and complicated. And complicating the permitting for this is, the pond is home to four state-listed rare and endangered birds. And they, you know how many reeds there are in the pond? They live in the reeds. Go figure, right? And also, the town began the search for, for the money, for the project. The, the grant that they received from the state was for design and permitting only, not for, not for construction. I just wanted to mention at this point, the methodology that really needs to be used for dredging Milford Pond, because there are areas of Milford Pond that has 30, 40 feet of peat underneath it. You cannot get a piece of equipment in the bottom of that pond, like a bulldozer or something like that. You have to dredge it with the water level up, and we've identified hydraulic dredging is the most practical and cost-effective methodology. It's great because it maintains the normal pond level. You don't have to water, lower the water level, so you don't lose the pond for a season or two. It uses a barge-mounted cutter head. This basically is, is nothing more than a giant pump floating on a barge with a suction cutter head that is kind of like a snow blower. It just lowers itself down into the material, stirs it up, sucks it up, and pumps it by pipeline to an area where you separate the water and the sediment, right? And that can be either somewhere in the lake itself, or somewhere on the, on the dry land. It can be pumped one or two miles if you have the money to do it. It's great because it has no impact to the pond margins that might be caused by a drawdown, and it, you have no chances of downstream sedimentation. So, any impacts that you might have are isolated within the pond itself. Let me tell you, if you try to drain a 120-acre pond with Charles River flowing through it, you're going to have sedimentation downstream, and a lot of people complaining. So, this would address that issue as well. Now, with that plan in hand, the one that I just had up on the board, we met with the elected officials here at Town Hall. Congressman Neal was here, Senator Moore, Representative Parenti, town officials, and everybody pledged to help. And Congressman, Congressman Neal said he was going to make this project his number-one environmental priority. He requested additional information subsequent to the meeting, and after he reviewed that information and made a few phone calls or whatever it is he does, he suggested that the town contact the Corps of Engineers and request their help. Now, the Corps has a couple of programs that he thought could be of use, and there was a meeting here at, at Town Hall in June 2001, where we found out about the Section 206 program. It's, it's an ongoing authority that the Corps has. I think they have about 50 million, 5-0, 50 million a year that they spend on this program. And it is, the purpose of the program is to restore aquatic ecosystems for fish and wildlife. That's all they do with this money. They like to have projects where they can spend a couple million, three, four, five million dollars, and turn an eyesore or a nuisance into a thriving ecosystem.
No, whatever.
Frozen.
Frozen.
Hit the escape key.
I did.
It's the windows, though.
No, it's not. No better than that.
Just probes it.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, the Corps got involved, and using federal government money, they conducted a federal feasibility...
feasibility study. They did an environmental assessment, and they did their cost-benefit analysis. Bottom line on this, they came up with an 8.9 million dollar project that they felt met all of their criteria. And they would fund up to $5 million from the Corps' money. That is their cap. $5 million is their cap for any given project. And the way it works is, it's 65% federal money, 35% non-federal money. They don't care where it comes from, right? But, and they'll go 65% up to the $5 million. So the way this was going to work, the 8.9 million dollar project, they would put in $5 million, and we were looking for the state to come up with half of the balance, and this local would be the other half of that. Now, as things went on with their process, going through some federal approvals and approval of the Corps Headquarters of the feasibility study and all that, and then there were some disasters like Hurricane Katrina and some wars going on, they felt that to make the project more competitive, they should trim it back just a little bit. And they made some changes to the area of dredging and knocked it down to about 7.7 million. And this is in 2008. More recently, starting a couple of years ago, the Corps initiated their permitting process. The town did some permitting. The Department of Environmental Protection said, well, wait a minute, you're dredging this many cubic yards. We've got to have additional sediment testing. And the Corps had to go back out to bid and hire somebody to take the samples and have them tested, and they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on that, of their own money. During this period, the Corps started to get some feedback on some similar types of dredging projects and realized that they, they thought that their cost estimates were a little off. They needed to go back and do some more testing based on these sediment samples. And also, in the interim, the Department of Environmental Protection changes the dredging regulations, which makes it more difficult to get rid of the dredged materials. They used to tell you, as long as they were relatively clean, they would tell you, you can do anything you want to with them. You can give them to your contractor and tell him to make these disappear. But under these new regulations that came out in 2008, I believe, they said, no more like that. You have to tell us before we give you the permit, you have to tell us where every drop of this stuff is going to go. And that gets a little difficult sometimes. So their revised cost estimate, a little over a year ago, was 13 to 15 million. And don't forget, they have a $5 million federal cap. So that meant somebody's going to have to come up with 8 to 10 million dollars besides the feds. I think we all felt like that was an impossibility. The Corps scratched their heads together, reached that. One of the great things about the Corps is they, you know, they're a nationwide, international, really, agency, and they have a lot of different people doing a lot of different things. And dredging is one of their main tasks. They have an ingenious alternative that they proposed for Milford Pond, and that was to use the dredging materials to create an upland area within parts of the pond that were really too shallow to be used as a pond in the first place. It avoids expensive dewatering costs, and I think more importantly, it addresses that uncertain disposal of the sediment. Again, 200, 300, 400,000 cubic yards, that's about an acre of material 100 feet deep, or conversely, 100 acres of foot deep. So it's a lot of material. And here's, here's their plan. It's to dredge an area of about 20 acres, which, 20 acres of open water is a huge area, to a maximum depth of 12 feet, 200,000 cubic yards of dredging. And they would pump that material up to this part of the pond here and create what they're calling a high-quality wetland area of about 26 acres in this area. It addresses the bird issue. It addresses the open water issues. It accomplishes all the goals of the Restoration Committee and of the restoration. So restore a significant area of open water, aquatic habitat, with sufficient depth, the 12 feet. It'll enhance the aquatic habitat for the fish. It'll improve water quality, preserves the habitat values for the waterfowl over in this area here, including those four species of rare birds that I talked about. Restores a balance between the open water habitat and the more, the aquatic beds and the emergent wetlands. And it'll also assist with total phosphorus reduction in the Charles River, which, as you know, for, especially for the towns of Franklin, Milford, and Bellingham, is a big issue these days. And then, of course, there'll be attendant recreational improvements, which wasn't really a goal for the Corps, because if you recall, this Section 206 program has to do with aquatic habitat restoration. But it will definitely have, and they were, they were aware of this, of course. They wanted to tweak the project particulars to make sure that this would restore boating, fishing, birding, and of course, the aesthetic values that are so important. We had a coordinated site visit between the Corps of Engineers and the regulatory community. The bird people were here, the Department of Environmental Protection was here, EPA was here. All of the agencies that would need to comment on this were here. We got comments from all those people. The project was, the alternative was very well-received. Everybody's excited about it. And what needs to happen is, as I mentioned earlier, they did their environmental assessment. It needs to be retooled now to reflect this, this new alternative, and that has not yet happened. But the good, good news is, the cost estimate has gone from 15 million to about 5 million. And again, I talked about the federal share and the non-federal share. This is the breakdown of that 5 million. And this does include escalation costs and all that has been, and contingency has all been figured into this. So what we're looking at now is a little over 5 million for the total project. The federal share would be a little over 3 million. The non-federal share is 1.8 million dollars. And again, Corps of Engineers doesn't care where that comes from. I've identified it on this slide as state slash local. Now, here are the next steps that need to happen from right now to go forward. Somebody needs to execute what the Corps calls their project partnership agreement. That's the agreement between the Corps of Engineers and the non-federal sponsor. When that's executed, the Corps is going to require a cash installment of $301,000 immediately. That is the percentage, roughly 35%, of what the Corps has already spent to date to get them to where they are today. So it's, the way this program works is, the Corps will front the cost until you get to a certain point, at which time the partner has to kick in to cover the back charges to get to that point. Does that make sense? So it hasn't cost, other than some permitting, it hasn't cost the town anything up to this This 301,000 will allow the Corps of Engineers to complete their plans and specifications and put the work out to bid. So they would finalize the construction documents and the federal permitting, and the non-federal sponsor would need to finalize the state and local permitting. Corps of Engineers doesn't do state or local permitting. And the town has, has that money already and appropriated to finish state and local permitting for the project. So keep that number in mind, the 1.8 million dollars. Currently, this is the schedule. If, if the town votes to become the non-federal sponsor on this project in October, then the project partnership agreement would be drafted and would be signed in the latter part of this calendar year. The Corps of Engineers would complete their plans and specs in the first quarter, first half of 2013. The final permits would be obtained in the latter half of 2013 and would go out to bid at the first of 2014 and be constructed over the 2014 and 2015 seasons. Keep doing dredging in the wintertime, hydraulic dredging. So it's possible that it could all get done in one season, but more than likely, it would have construction to a second season. We had a meeting at the State House back in March. Dino was there, Mike Santora was there, I was there, Virginia Purcell from Congressman Neal's office. We met with Secretary Sullivan, and Dick Moore and John Fernandes were there. Secretary Sullivan is the Secretary of Environmental Affairs and reports directly to the governor. And we were basically there asking for money, for state money. The secretary was very impressed that the town has done as much work as they have done, that they've gotten the Corps of Engineers involved. The secretary is very familiar with this program, with the Corps of Engineers. He has seen a couple of projects successfully completed with this program in the state of Massachusetts. And he was very positive about the state being able to find some monies. And it was stated that the town would certainly appreciate if the state could become 50-50 partners on this. We have not heard back from Secretary Sullivan since this meeting, but again, he was very positive and felt that some monies could be dug up somewhere. Because we've gotten so far, and he does know that once the Corps gets to this level, it's just a matter of flipping the switch with the money and the thing goes, thing goes Then we met with John Cannelli of the Corps of Engineers. We just wanted to have him here in town. He was in last month. We sat down with him and discussed the project. We wanted to hear from him that the plan is reasonable, functional, scientifically proven. And John, being the chief of the planning branch, I mean, this Section 206 program is his baby for New England District. And John is very positive and very affirmative about the project and is encouraging the town. All we need now is that non-federal sponsor to move forward, because they, they're stuck. They're out of money. They can't go any further on the project until they get some additional monies and get that partnership agreement signed. So that's, that's where we're at. So you want me to talk about the 1.8 million? Yeah, yeah. The 1.8 million would be the, the non-federal share for the project. And you can't, when you sign that partnership agreement, whoever signs that partnership agreement, they're committing to that 1.8 million. 301,000 of which needs to be handed over at the time of signing.
So the 300 is part of the 1.8?
Yes. Part of the 1.8. Now, construction would be subject to federal funding, appropriation by Congress for this specific project. We talked to Mr. Cannelli about that as well, and his response was that, once you, once you get a federal, you've come as far as you have and you've got the federal sponsor, you're in line for the money. All right? And you don't get out of line until, until the money comes. You don't get kicked out of line. So in other words, it's, he couldn't say it's, you're approved, but you don't get kicked out of line. You're there, in line, waiting for your turn. And he said it was very good, based on the projects that they have on, on the drawing boards now and that type of thing, that Milford would be approved for the construction in the 2014 season. He was a little concerned that if, if we tried to go to construction this, this summer, the summer of 2013, that A, either the plans and permits wouldn't quite be done, and/or so the funding might be a little iffy from Congress, because they want to make sure you're shovel-ready, right? So by getting started now, we can make sure that we're shovel-ready for the 2014 season.
And he feels that the federal commitment, which is 3 million plus, would, would
Yes.
Be as a progression of appropriation?
Yes, yes, yes.
And it's, and it's this number here, right? The roughly 3.3 million? Because when I look at the narrative over here, I see 2.4, but that, that must be, that must be a math error.
That's on one of the sheets, Tom.
When I look at it, says roughly the 2.4 and the 1.7.
That is a math error.
No, I didn't think so. I was a little confused. So this really should be the 3.
3.28.
Yeah, but on this one here, it should be, I guess, 3 million, not 2 million.
Yes.
Council Brian and Bill, the, of course, we have to, you know, like any other project, continue to work with the FinCom. I've talked to Barbara, talked to Paula, been there, trying to put some numbers together. Vicenzo Velastro's been a, a big asset. He's on the committee on the, going back and forth with the FinCom. So the 1.8, and whatever variation that, you know, we've done many times. So let's say we were able to take 300,000 out of free cash, then the bonding number would be 1.5. That money would only be bonded, begin to be bonded, when the monies from the federal government are released. So that money would not be, that money would not be utilized. The construction could begin in '14, could begin, could begin in '15. We still continue to work very, very hard at the state level with John, Dick, the governor's office, lieutenant governor's office, to hopefully obtain some monies from the state. And the 35% is always involved in that. When I asked Secretary Sullivan, no, he asked me, what was the town looking for, knowing that the state-local level was 1.8? I said, well, if we can go half and half, I think, you know, that would be really ideal. And he said, wow, he goes, usually people come in, they ask the whole thing, because the towns haven't done anything. I said, no. I said, Milford has done a lot, we've put in money, we've, we've been able to obtain 50,000 in the past from the private sector. So he looked at Dan and said, for the work that you've done and half-half, I'll certainly go back and see what we can do for you. So the 301 is the most important. Once we give that to the Corps, they'll get the project shovel-ready. If we bond, let's say, 1.5, whatever the case may be, that, those monies would only be released as far as bonding when the Corps releases their monies.
Right.
And, and at the same time, I've talked to John and Dick so many times over the past months, made many phone calls to the Secretary's office. Hopefully, we can obtain some monies from the state, which would reduce the bonding to the town. So I think the main thing is, with being upfront, nothing is guaranteed. The only guarantee is that 301 will make it shovel-ready, so everything will be ready to go. Once the monies are released from the federal government, we'll continue to work at the state level to obtain monies. Hopefully, if we do receive some monies from the state, the amount of bonding will be less. And the other item is, once again, we have to continue to speak with the FinCom, is more monies we can put with free cash, of course, it lowers the bonding amount. Once, once again, once the monies are released from the federal government. The committee, the members who are here and the members at home have worked very hard on this. And from day one, we knew it was very, very comprehensive, very difficult, very tedious, and that every time we took a step forward, we took two steps forwards, backwards, but the committee did not give up. We've been able to work with all those individuals and boards and commissioners and Tom Beatty that I mentioned at the beginning. And we just, we just feel that, you know, now's the right time to go forward, to try to do something. And I'd like to ask Tom, just a, from a professional engineer, Tom, when I mentioned window of opportunity, can you tell the board and the people at home listening what the window of opportunity means regarding this project?
Well, what I believe that means is, you've already got large areas of that pond that are increasing are increasing in size, that are part of that bird habitat that I mentioned. And getting in there is very, is almost impossible from a permitting, from Massachusetts Environmental Species Act. It's almost impossible to get in there. We're going to touch some of that. We're going to kind of arrest that by making it deeper so that it won't creep any further. So that's part of it. Another part of it is the changing regulations. Again, I've been doing this work in Massachusetts for 25 years. It doesn't get any easier. It always gets more and more difficult. Those dredging regulations that they came up with were a huge blow to Lake and Pond restoration. And we lobbied against it as consultants because we didn't feel it really did much to protect human health and safety, but led to additional costs in the dredging business. And we were unsuccessful in getting them to change their minds. And so from those two standpoints, and the project has come, has a huge amount of accomplishments to date and has a certain amount of momentum. It's been stalled a little bit from the Corps when they had to go back and do the sediment testing and all that. But I feel like this project is at a threshold where it just needs to get over that hump. And if it doesn't, it's going to be a severe setback. Because it's taken a long time and a lot of energy to get to this point. The Corps is involved. They're excited about it. They've reached their threshold as well, and they want to go forward. And it does need a shot in the arm now. And I think, I feel like it's time to move.
And Tom, the cost, I mean, the cost.
Well, the cost, of course. I mean, nothing goes down. The cost is only going to go up. And if their cap, their cap has been at 5 million for a long time, even though costs continue on. So that, I don't know if they have any designs on raising that cap, but my guess is they don't. So that, the amount that they're going to participate is going to be less and less over time.
And, you know, long-term, I mean, hopefully, everyone will weigh in and all that, but as a community, you know, if we do nothing, in 10 or 15 years, it's going to continue to be tremendous vegetation. The sediments will become like landmass. When the residents first came in a long time ago, they talked about the excessive vegetation. And that was back in '92, '91. In the summertime, the odors caused by the vegetation and all that. The, you know, possible, the animals and whatnot. So if you look at, you know, 15 years down the road, it's going to really be a lot worse than what it is today. And, you know, do you want that? I mean, do you want to lose that pristine area where you have, I mean, look what the bike trail has done. Look at Fino Field. You look at what the park commissioners were able to do with the Rosenfeld Pond. I mean, that was a dump, and they made it to what it is today. I mean, look at the Louisa Lake project now, the bike trail. So all those amenities, I think, are tremendous for a community. So, and Milford Pond is right in the center of it. And so the committee, you know, truly feels, once again, that, you know, we have to try to go forward. I mean, now's the time to try to do something. And all those cost estimates, the prevailing thing all the time was we have to try to make it as low as possible. So the town can afford it. It couldn't afford it before, but I think with this scenario, if we're able to come up with the 301,000, continue to work with the state, look at the free cash so that the bonding would not be as high. And once again, the $300,000, that would be given to the Corps, let's say, in October, if everybody agrees here in the FINCOM and town meeting members. And then the rest of the monies would not be utilized until the monies are released from the federal government, from the US government. So, you know, we feel that the protections are in, and we would never do anything to injure the town in Milford, of course, and we just want to try to, you know, make it better and try to provide this for fishing, boating, kayaking, all that. And we just feel for the residents, for future, it's not for us, for future generations, I think it would be something to lose if we don't do anything. Because I think, like everything else, we've been involved for a long time. 10 or 15 years down the road, if we're still here, people will say, "You came so close, and why didn't you do anything?" So that's the reasoning, that's the justification, that's the alternative, and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
As we go forward.
Bill, did you have any comments?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think we've got the schedule. At least I can't find it readily in the packet. But I just want to, first of all, say that this is something that the town should be supportive of. The point that's pretty powerful to me is what happens if we do nothing. My sense is that it, from hearing from you and listening to others, that it basically has the potential just to become a bog, where the wildlife that's endangered may increase, at least for a period of time, then that may even go away.
It may, yeah.
So that we may end up with nothing there, not a place for endangered animals and not a place where there's passive, there's opportunities for recreation and a clear pass-through. But you mentioned something that I wanted to follow up on because the EPA has certainly talked to us a great deal about phosphorus reduction. And can you make the connection for me in how this project furthers that goal of phosphorus reduction?
Sure, absolutely. The amount of phosphorus that has washed into this pond over the decades since it was constructed in '39 has been tremendous. And the pond has served as a sink for that phosphorus. It typically comes in, absorbed to the sediments that are flowing in, and it settles out in the pond. And that gets taken up by the vegetation, is fueling that excessive vegetation growth in a way that is the definition of eutrophication, is excessive accelerated, artificially accelerated vegetative growth. The plants grow because of all that phosphorus, and then they die and they sink to the bottom, and then you've got new sediment coming in. So you just get more and more sediment in the system, and it gets recycled every year with this even more and more and more vegetative growth. It never leaves the system. When you get the dieback and the degradation, some of that phosphorus is released and goes downstream, but a lot of it, most of it, just goes back into the sediments. So you just get this bigger, larger and larger store of phosphorus in the system, in the Charles River system. If you dredge it and isolate it in an upland area, and you're, in effect, taking it out of the system, it's not in the aquatic environment anymore, it's in this terrestrial environment. It's separated from the pond. So it's not subject to that recycling, it's not subject to that release to downstream areas. So it would contribute to the reduction in phosphorus, overall phosphorus in the Charles River system.
In this modified plan, is there a de-wetting process?
Well, it's, what's great about it is we had, there are, there is a de-watering process, yes. The cheapest and easiest way to do de-watering is to build a large basin and pump the material up there and let gravity do the de-watering for you. It decants, the stuff settles down, it decants, and you let it spill over the top so you get clear water spilling over the top. That's what they want to do, but they want to do it in an area of the pond that is already kind of lost, if you will. It's kind of rocky up there.
Sure.
It's shallow, very shallow. And this hasn't been mentioned by anybody, but I will say that it's a good thing to have the Corps of Engineers involved because nobody else would be allowed to do that.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, because while I'm supportive of it, we've got, obviously, we've got to balance a lot of things that we have financially on the books or about to go on the books. And Dino talked about a future time where we're going to, because this is actually the first time I've heard that we're talking about bonding beyond the 300,000. And so do we know for sure if we have a funding plan from the town that takes care of our portion that's consistent with this schedule? Or is that something that's still being constructed? I'll look to Mark in the back through the chair, or do we? So if we take the, for example, if we look for appropriation of 1.7 million dollars, and assuming no state funds come in, we've got a town appropriation of
1.8, right?
1.8.
1.8, I'm sorry. At 1.8, and assuming that we'll eventually spend that down, do we have a funding mechanism that would align to that program, to that schedule? Is there a plan?
There is, there is nothing at this point, because this is just being brought forward.
Right, I'm just wondering, if we're not talking about a combination of free cash, if we're not talking about a bonding, a bond?
I think if I may.
Yes, please.
You know, once again, we have to, the 1.8 is what Barbara put together for us as it is. But if we take 300,000 out of free cash, then that number goes to 1.5. If we take a couple hundred thousand dollars more or add to it next year, because it's not going to really begin till '14 or '15, and then, once again, that lower number, that bonding that we have, the lower number by using free cash, and then like, hopefully, we'll be able to obtain some monies through the state, it would make it even lower. So the more money that we're able to use with free cash, the lower bonding amount. And those monies won't be used, utilized until the Army Corps of Engineers releases their monies. But the only thing they need in the fall is the 301,000.
Yeah, Lou.
Right, I guess that's what I'm looking for.
I think Lou wanted to expound on that.
I got one concern, the 1.8. If we're going
1.5, or, well.
Right, 1.5, 1.8. If I'm correct, my assumption is that if the board approves it, this will be placed in the warrant to go forward. We have to go forward for the entire 1.8 at this moment.
Right, that's why I'm coming out.
You're only committed to the 300. But I want to caution, I want to caution us, if we approve, the town meeting, if they approve 1.8 with the understanding only 3, the state's not even going to take a look at us to give us a dime. We better, we better understand that this evening. If they find that a town has approved the 1.8 bond, we'll get not a dime. And that's okay. I mean, if the town believes that we should go forward and this is a viable project, that's okay. But at least, let's understand that tonight and make sure that we don't fool people. Because no state is going to, not, never mind, we'll give you 900 even though you approved it. That doesn't count.
Yeah, so it would be appropriate.
And again, that's not to, that's not to say we shouldn't do it or you shouldn't do it.
No, no, no. That's why, my approach to this is that I'm supportive of the program. What I want to understand is how we fund the 1.8 and what its potential impact is to other programs or other things that we've got either financial commitment to or about to go on the books. If they have to be reduced, let's say they have to be reduced. If we're going to bond it, or if we're going to use combination of free cash and bonding mechanism, what I'd like to hear is somebody that's done the financial analysis of it, tell us that when we go to expend these funds beyond the 300,000, and I'm assuming some of that would be expended before that second quarter calendar year 2014, that we know where that money would come from and where we, you know, how we'd appropriate it.
Absolutely.
Not how we'd appropriate it. And that would have to be known going into town meeting because I think that would be important to tell town meeting.
Absolutely.
Well, let me just get, the 301, Tom, that gets you to bid, correct?
That gets you to this point.
Yeah, I'm talking about construction.
That's through permitting and all of that sort of thing, okay, yeah. I mean, I think at this point, I understand what you're saying, and that's obviously the details of it.
Mm-hmm.
But I think right now, for tonight, I think the question is whether or not, you know, we think that this is a good concept going forward to put forth on the town meeting warrant. And if so, then like any project, we have to assume worst-case scenario.
Yeah.
And have meetings with the finance committee, with the town treasurer, with town council, to see what the viable alternatives are going forward.
But it has to be
And it has to be ready for town meeting.
Yeah, it has to be understood that we're asking to be supportive of it without the financial analysis of how we would fund that.
Well, that's not understood because what I assume you'll do, if you decide that it is a viable project and you're going to go forward, then the regular financial team meetings will be taking place, and those discussions will be taking place, and we'll be making recommendations before, before the October 22nd with a layout of how much is going to be taken out of free cash, what the priority projects are.
If it's a agreement in principle, I can sign on to that right now.
Bill.
Because the concept seems appropriate.
Questions that Ewan Bryan raised, those are, you know, definitely
We just need the analysis.
Questions, and that has to be done for town meeting.
Sure.
I mean, there's no question about that. I mean, the full scope has to be presented and hopefully over the next couple of weeks. Like I said, I've talked to Barbara, she's come up with a couple of scenarios. Paula Van Danza's been working. Vincenzo has been involved. I've tried to give information to the FINCOM. But this is something also that, you know, this isn't a Johnny-come-lately. I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time, but the financial aspect, the questions you raise and bring up, we definitely have to have the information for ourselves and for town meeting.
I mean, and it seems to me, just by hearing this, that you're talking about, for the upcoming town meeting, an appropriation of about $300,000 from free cash, which needs to go out fairly quickly, and then an authorization to bond up to 1.5, which, over the course of time, could change
Right.
depending upon possible free cash contributions and/or draw from stabilization.
Yeah, and what, I think the assumption
So I understand that, yeah.
So do I. And from the assumption there, you just have to assume, for the sake of discussion, for the analysis, that we're bonding the 1.5.
And that's the worst-case scenario, with the 300.
Right, because that's your, at least your commitment
Yeah.
should, you know, depending on what we can do with free cash. And then what we should do is get the analysis of that bonding of 1.5.
Oh, sure. That would have to be plugged into the long-term debt schedule.
So I'm good.
Taking into account, of course, you know, the massive woodland project.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't want to sound as though I'm negative on it. This is actually something I've been in favor of for a very long time. When you go back and look at some of the old pictures, as a matter of fact, there are pictures out there that are long before the '30s.
Really?
Yeah, where you see there's active boating
Yeah.
in that, on that pond. And some of them, the women in period getup are, they have parasols and, you know, the boats, you could tell, were clearly before the '30s. I would venture a guess, early 1900s.
Correct, really?
If not 18, late 1800s. So restoring that, and as Dino said, putting, making an investment for future generations is certainly something that's worthwhile. We just have to be able to explain it to people and say how we're going to do it. So I think that's the right piece of it. I think that the agreement in principle to go forward is something we ought to pursue, and we just ought to have that information before we go to town meeting.
Sure. Tom, let me ask you a question because I know one of the points of discussion on this is you're talking about 120-acre water site in total. The initial plan was to do about a third of it. Even that, there were some thoughts that, you know, are we even going to notice the difference? And now we're doing, you know, about a sixth of it. So, you know, the million-dollar question, actually, the five-million-dollar question. The five-million-dollar question is, you know, when all is said and done, is it really going to make a visible difference where it's that small a portion of the water, of the body of water?
Well, I guess it's personal opinion, but my personal opinion is, is that it would make a huge difference.
Okay.
It'll be a 20-acre open water body, 12 feet deep. And 20 acres of open water is huge. When you look out at Milford Pond, especially late July, middle of August, you hardly see any open water.
Right.
And to have a 20-acre open water body, and it will also connect to the one spot in Milford Pond that is deep water. It's up there in the little crook between Rosenfeld and Plains Park. That's fairly deep up there. It's up to about 10, 11 feet deep there. So the dredging would actually connect to that as well. So the actual open water would be, that's the only area of deep water in the whole pond, would be connected to that. So it would actually be somewhat larger than the 20 acres. But, you know, I would think you have to, you have to temper what you you had to, you have to temper what you want with what reality in terms of finances, but-
No, I understand that.
I think most towns would, to have a 20-acre open water body in the center of town would be fantastic.
Now, now, the second question is, because as you're talking about moving the material back to, 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 I guess, the, the back portion or the northerly portion, wherever it is, how is that going to change the complexion of the, of the body of water?
Well, it won't be, it won't, it's, it's dense weeds now in, in the summertime.
Yeah.
So it really doesn't look like open water. But it will be somewhat elevated, about three or four feet up in that area, and it'll be a, a wetland area, basically.
And, and how is that going to change the surrounding area? Is it going to bring more wildlife?
It will be a wildlife.
More insects, more vegetation?
Well, less, less insects.
More, do you know what I mean? What, what's the overall environmental impact that we might not be contemplating at this point?
No, that's a good question. It, it, it will be, I would say it would be less insects, because there'll be almost no standing water whatsoever.
Okay.
And it would be, start off as being shrubs and herbaceous vegetation, and eventually would be more of a forested type, like a red maple swamp, not a swamp, but a, a red maple forest, dark damp forest over time.
Okay. All right, well, we'll look forward to town meeting presentation on this, and, and Tom, you'll be available for that, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay, and Al will be riding shotgun with you to make sure that the PowerPoint's working correctly.
Members want to say something, if you want to ask them.
Yeah, I know that there are some members of the pond committee here. Would anybody like to make a comment or address any of the points that were brought up?
Ever.
Yeah, Reno, sure.
Mr. Chairman, do you, I think I said this at the last committee meeting. For this project, it's been going on, and I can speak with experience with a drill project for more than a decade, maybe two decades, but the stars are never going to line up any better than they are now. If we don't act now, we're never going to get this done. If some other capital improvement can wait a year or two, that's not as critical as this, I would advise that. Because as Tom said, we've got all the agencies lined up, we've got all the environmental work done, we've got a bulk of the monies coming from the federal government. You're never going to see a situation, even though economic times are difficult in this community as it is throughout the country, if we don't take advantage of this opportunity at this October town meeting, we might as well just fold up at 10 and kiss off Cedar Swamp Pond to a, a upland area in the foreseeable future. It's not going to get any better.
And once that happens, you'll never get it back.
No, we'll never get it back.
It'll be gone forever.
Yeah, Mark?
I, I just have a couple of questions. This summary that was presented, at the bottom it says, once we sign this agreement, we're on the hook for a total of 1.8 million. What if the feds don't come through with the money? We're not on the hook for 5 million. We're not on the hook for the whole 5.
It wouldn't go to construction unless the federal funds have been appropriated and guaranteed.
I think to answer your question, though, I think it was said that the 300 would be spent.
Yes.
That's the piece of it. That's the piece of the 1.8 that would be.
The other question I had is, year-to-date, we've spent almost 400,000 on this project to get us to this point? Or do we owe 300,000 from that 400,000 that we've already spent? Is that what you're telling me?
That's not what I'm telling you. Let me, let me, what's the 400 been spent on that, what do you have that on?
I have a, an analysis done with the money that was donated, some state revenue, and three articles, we've spent 373,000 a day.
Well, I, I mean, rather than get into that now, because I have all the information in front of me.
I just want to know.
I think that's-
I just want to know if the 300 we're putting up is to cover some of the costs that were not covered in the original-
I, I, I don't know that, and I don't want to shoot off the, off the cuff on that, but you know as well as I, that's the kind of stuff that we really need to work out. It's at some committee-level meetings, which I assume the pond committee and the finance committee will have.
I know, Mark, those are good questions, and, you know, John, besides being in charge of that, he's a, he's a Milford person, lives in Hopi. At the last meeting, when we had the meeting, I asked him for information. He'll prob, he'll give us that information to, to back up what he stated at the meeting. So as far as we are concerned, and my main priority is the town, along with Brian and Bill, and we're not going to support anything that is going to hurt the town. But the, once we sign the agreement, the 301,000 dollars will be used to be, to give us, to get, get us to a point of shovel-ready. The rest of the monies will not be utilized until the monies are released from the federal government.
But, just one more, or two more questions. What would the environmental impact be if we did nothing? If we let the, the pond continue to vegetate and increase the habitat?
It would be gone.
What would be the worst-case scenario? I mean, would it be beneficial, not beneficial, other than not having a place to, for recreational activities?
Well, from a humanistic standpoint-
Tom, Tom, could you get over here, please? That won't get carried on TV.
It should not. Thank you.
From a humanistic standpoint, I think you would, you would lose whatever benefits that the pond provides for, for humans. From an animalistic standpoint, the habitat is, is changing. Going from what used to be open water to less and less and less and less open water, to the point at which the only open water you have is a narrow thread of the Charles River flowing through there. So you're changing from a, a pond and lake and pond environment to effectively a riverine environment, such as you might have upstream or downstream of, of Milford Pond, so.
So it would affect the, the existing habitat, the wild, the wildlife, would degrade or improve?
Well, I don't know if you would call it degradation or improvement, but it would change. It would change from the type of habitat that supports a certain type of life, plant and animal life, to, to a habitat that supports a totally different type. And what this program is aimed at doing is restoring somewhat of a balance between some open water habitat and some non-open water, some aquatic, more aquatic emergent vegetation, that type of thing. So more of a balanced type, where you've got everything. Where it's, it's headed for where you've got nothing but a thin thread of a river with moving water and, and wetlands, so.
One more quick one. Does anybody in the room, maybe, maybe Reno knows what the acreage is of Louisa Lake?
I don't know.
Excellent.
I think it's, I think the 20 acres or 22 acres that would be through this project.
Louisa Lake, the whole thing is probably between 19 and 21 acres.
I just want to some reference.
And also, Mr. Chairman, just because it's important, like David Condray is a member of the committee, the water company. We have water wells, so we're very sensitive about the water wells. He stated that, you know, this project, the, the Milford Water Company is tremendously in favor of it, because the deeper water, the water quality becomes better for the, for the area, and it, it makes the whole aspect better. We'll also need a, some type of a maintenance program, because I know the FinCom is, Vincenzo brought up, what are we going to do for maintenance? And at the meeting, a couple, in August 21st, I don't want to put words in the water company's mouth, but he said that there's a tremendous possibility that they might be able to put a line item in their budget to take care of the, like we're doing at Louisa Lake, so that we maintain it and we, we put in benign herbicides to, to kill the vegetation and all that. So that, that's part of the maintenance that has to be done. But, you know, he's 100% in favor of the project, because of the wells, the deeper water is better water quality, eliminating the phosphorus, and plus all the other things. I mean, you know, as a, personally, as a Milford resident, with all the things that are around there, and that's right in the center of town, you know, in 15, 20 years, I mean, as the question that Bill asked, are you, Mark, I mean, you know, what's going to be there? Tremendous vegetation, the stench, you know, the, the possibility of, of animals? And those are the things that people talked about in a bad way back in 1991. So we're looking down the road 15, 20 years, and do you want that, next to a pool, next to ball fields? I mean, it would probably come to a situation where you'd have to put up some fences to block everything off, and then, you know, what do you have there for the people of Milford? So, I mean, those are the things that, you know, I think are important.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just one more comment. I just wanted to respond to Reno's comment, I agree with him, that if something might need to bump, like, having been in this position before, you understand then, the question then becomes, what bumps? Right, so, right?
That's what we go through every fault.
Right, and so I think it's important to know that, what we're planning in terms of our long-term capital projections, and to know what its potential impact is, if we bond, if we look for, how much of it's free cash. Yeah, I'm not suggesting this has a less priority or a greater priority than anything else right now. What I want to hear is what the analysis tells us. So I'm in agreement with your comment, I just wanted to, to add that.
So, Mark, I think your committee obviously has some work to do with Dean's committee in terms of running some long-term debt schedules and see how these numbers match up to what's on the books, and what type of plan you can come up with to maybe make contributions towards it so that it's not such a bonding number. But it's an exercise that, you know, you've done before, and you can do it again. But at this point, I think we're in agreement that the concept is obviously worthy enough to be placed on the town meeting warrant. And from that point, there'll be a presentation and let the town meeting members decide on it. Okay? Reno, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Tom, thank you very much for your work. Okay? And we look forward to seeing some more of you over the next month or so.
Alberto, thanks for the technical assistance.
All right. No problem, you did a good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well, it's open meeting, it's presented, right, so it's part of the record.
Thanks, you guys.
What does he, what does he need?
He just wants a soft copy.
Oh, send you the copy. Town administrator's report, Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Firstly, all budgets under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectment are on target. Secondly, I'd like to remind everyone that the warrant for the October 22nd special town meeting closes on this Thursday, September 13th at noon time. Anyone has an article, they should get it to our office as soon as possible. Thirdly, on Wednesday, September 5th, we had Special Agent Bill Sansone and Eric Lozonsky, the auditor, meet with myself, Bob Rosia, Kathy Perry, the Assistant Superintendent, and Mrs. Carol Liberto from that office to begin the process of the e-Verify system in the town of Milford self-audit. We must begin the e-Verify system by October 20th, 2012, which is two months after the signing of the agreement. The next meeting with ICE officials will be on October 1st with the town treasurer and October 3rd with the school department. And as you know, everybody in town hired after November 7th, 1986, must have an I-9 form. Our self-audit will review approximately 1,500 names. And finally, just a brief update on the town hall project. The painting project is moving ahead steadily, we're probably at about 60% completion. As for the stair repairs, we, we have had a bit of a snag, and we've been out of action probably for three or four weeks. All of a sudden, the quarries in New England are, are busy after being dormant for some two or three years. I spoke to a couple of groups of people this morning, and it's now targeted for mid-week with the granite to be delivered. So once the granite's delivered, it'd be for the stairs that have been demolished and also for the other side. So we'll be able to pick up some time and, and we'll move quickly once that happens, and hopefully it will be this week. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Dean, questions, comments?
Bill? Just one comment, is it related to the quarries? Are we talking about changing where that granite's coming from, Texas local?
No, it's, it's the granite that the board selected, nothing's, nothing's changed.
Okay, all right.
Old business, Dean, do you have any old business?
Just one item, Mr. Chairman, I know in the past, well, first of all, if we can ask, Louis, for you, Louis, to get a recent update on the, the accidents at South Main Street. There was one a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, I live in that section, I, I drive by all the time. The other day, I witnessed something which, which was very scary, and I know in the past, about five or six years ago, the chief and I and Mike went to the location. I think we, we had some trees trimmed for a line of vision, we put up some signs. But there might be something else that we could do to, in the future, to, to make it less dangerous as it is now.
Where, where are we talking, Dean?
South Main Street.
What part of South Main Street?
South Main Street and Fruit Street.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right at the bottom of the hill.
South Main and Fruit Street intersection.
Right.
Okay.
And also, Brian, Bill, there's a blinking yellow light, but it's very small, and that hangs over that intersection, it's been there for a long time. And I think that's part of the problem, I think a lot of times when, when there's sunlight and this and that. So I think, one, it would be nice to review the accidents that we've had there. We've had a couple of fatalities, bad accidents. And then maybe to try to ascertain if there's a, a better plan for that intersection for the future.
How, how long do you want to go back in terms of accident information?
Uh, the chief can give us the information, the stats, maybe 10 years or something, Louis, if we have that.
10 years?
Yeah.
Okay. Then what, you want to have the town engineer look at it to see if there's anything to be done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, you know, people are coming down South Main Street, and really, like I said, there's been some bad accidents, a couple of people, a couple of fatalities, and, you know, what I saw the other day was very, very scary, so. If we could, yeah, God bless you, so if we can look at it.
Hopefully you stay off that road, uh, Mr. President.
Right, very cautious, Mr. Salazi.
All right, we'll get some information and have the town engineer take a look at it and see if there's any suggestions.
Yeah, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Bill?
Yeah, I just wanted to check on old business and terms of response from National Grid, if there's been any schedule or plan, if their inventory numbers agree with ours in terms of double poles, if there's been anything from them.
Had a conversation with them, they, they do want to participate, they do understand. They're mobilizing now, they have made a commitment to us to take 50 poles off the street immediately. They took the fire chief's report, and they're working it into their own, and I expect within the next week or so, we'll, we'll see some poles disappearing.
No, I'm just trying to-
Double poles.
Yeah, just trying to figure out what that commitment is and if they could put out a plan for us. I, I heard 50, right? I'm just wondering where-
Yeah, we got anything in writing from them?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, well, we need that. So follow up for the next meeting, have them get a report. I mean, they were giving us monthly reports before, so we really need to get back on that schedule.
Yeah, it seems like we're not on top of it.
It's not going to happen.
Billy, we couldn't be on, on top of this anymore, but we're at their, we're at their mercy.
No, but I, I say on top of it-
These people hear from me weekly.
Their monthly reports went away. They stopped. We stopped communicating with them, and they stopped communicating.
No, we did not, we did not stop communicating with them.
All right, let me say this.
I mean, they, they don't, when they see, when they see my number come up, it's, it's weekly that I'm calling these people. I mean, Brian hit the, hit the head, the nail on the head, when he said there's been a cutback in personnel, and this thing's fallen to the back of the line. It's not our commitment that's fallen to the back of the line by any means. It's, it's on their part. And, and again, I will follow up with them again, and I will be on the phone with them tomorrow.
Okay.
Is there legislation that John was sponsoring, anything on that?
I, I don't know, was there anything?
The legislation, Louis, on the MMA, you know?
That, this, John's, John's talked to the chairman, they're pulling, there's about eight bills on double poles that they're trying to pull together. And again, the lobbying against that, you can, you can't believe, it's immense, from National Grid and the other places.
If they took a percentage of those resources and put it out on the street, I think your double poles would be blown.
And, and part of my concern, when I hear there's a commitment to get rid of 50, that could mean a net increase of 20 at the rate we've been going, so that's, you know-
They could cut 50, and we could be up 80.
Exactly.
Exactly, exactly.
I, I'd like to see them make a substantial commitment to the town to keep it below a certain number, so.
We, we, we need to go back to the written reports that we were getting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which itemized each poll and the provider on each poll, and the status of the provider, whether it was still on the poll, to be removed or removed. And, I mean, that was the only systematic way that it got, it got reduced down to the 70s, so either National Grid, or N-Star, or Verizon, or somebody's going to have to, somebody's going to have to come through.
And I have to believe those are all National Grid customers, right? In other words, there's a, there's a fee associated with being on that poll. Right, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
If it's Verizon, it's National Grid's problem. If it's some other cable company, telephone company, it's National Grid's problem.
Well, see what you can get, and then we'll take it from there. Anything else, Bill?
No, no, that's enough.
Okay, new business? We have the list for the special town meeting. You want to go over this, Lou? Is this, is this still a work in progress?
No, this is a work in progress. We had two, two come in this afternoon from the Highway Surveyor.
Okay.
And I'm sure there'll be a couple more prior to, prior to our next meeting. I'll try to, I will have a complete list for you at the next, next meeting.
Okay, all right. And just my point of view, you and I had talked, I'm, I'm interested in an article for a fence replacement for the senior center, and then also one that I, I do want to mention, which I just received an email today on behalf of the bike trail. General maintenance, and this is from Reno, you know, general maintenance is, is a problem on the trail. It's, it's going to swiftly deteriorate. Right now, you know, graffiti's an issue. The Parks Department had tried to get an increase in their budget for maintenance. Apparently, that, that's hit a roadblock. So, unless the Finance Committee of the Parks Department are going to be putting on an article for about $20,000, I, I would like to have us put on the article to target maintenance for the bike trail, because right now, it's just going to slip, continue to slip through the cracks, and it's going to continue to deteriorate, and we just can't allow that to happen, not on such a very, very popular recreational facility. So, just put that as a notation. If the Parks don't come forward, the FinCom doesn't come forward, I'd like to have an article from us, the $20,000 to target maintenance for the bike trail. Do you have any articles, Dean?
No, just the one that tonight.
Go.
Do we know, just to follow up on that one, do we know if, or what that $20,000 is for?
It would be basically for yearly maintenance, which includes, I guess, trimming back, you know, the trees, the brush, grass cutting, and of course, the big thing, trash cleanup and graffiti removal and, and damage repair.
I was thinking, is it, is it more equipment, more personnel?
I think it's, I think it's more personnel and more time. I think the Parks Department have, have looked to hire some part-time people and get increased hours on the trail, and for some reason, they're not having success in their discussions with the Finance Committee, so.
Maybe we could look at that proposal and be supportive of that as well, see how that goes.
Yeah.
Because I agree with you, we've got to solve the problem, and maybe it's just a gap between the proposal that's being made and what the FinCom is assuming that's part of.
The meetings have been very frustrating, because I've been with the FinCom meeting, where Reno has made the pitch, the Parks Department have put forth a budget, and they just can't seem to get out of the starting gate with funding. So, this is an email that came from Reno today to the committee, and, you know, it talks about maintenance. Graffiti continues to be a persistent problem. You know, the Parks Department tries to remove it as best they can. General maintenance continues to be a problem. It's, it's not going to be too long. I mean, right now, you've got the, the Friends of the Trail that are doing a nice job in terms of volunteer maintenance, but, you know, if we continue to go down this path, it's not going to be long before that area deteriorates so that it's not as appealing as it is.
And I don't, I don't have any.
And to me, those are short dollars.
Yeah, I don't have any doubt there's a problem.
Yeah.
What I haven't heard yet is what the proposal is to solve it, in terms of how many part-timers, what, what's the increase in hours that would solve it, and I haven't heard that piece of it yet.
It's, it's.
And I don't think it's been presented to the FinCom yet.
Yes, it has. It is a budget.
A detailed plan?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't seen it.
It's, it's a budget to the extent of about $20,000.
Okay.
From the Parks Department.
Oh, okay. I can follow up.
Contact Mike.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too, if you can get that in our heart.
He's got it itemized, he's got it itemized as to what the hours and maintenance needs are.
All right.
And that's, that's kind of where it's at, so.
Okay.
I just want to break that logjam.
Agreed.
I don't really care who submits the article, or where the funding comes from, or whose budget it's in. I just want the resources there so that that bike trail continues to be maintained, because it's, it's really our prime recreation area, and, you know, you go on it, you know, the kiosks that are put up, there's graffiti there, you know, there's, there's trash, there's growth that just comes in tremendously, needs a tremendous amount of attention to keep, to keep the growth cut back on a continuous basis, and we can only ask volunteers to do so much.
Agreed.
It's a town, you know, facility. You know, you're not talking about major bucks. We need to.
Yeah, I'd like to see Mike's plan, and I think we'd be in good shape.
Okay.
Right, can I ask Louis a question?
Yeah.
Louis, some of the parks, do you know what fund environmental issues, Plains Park, that 125, you know what that is?
Off the top of my head, I, I read the sheet. I'd rather, it was a combination of about four or five different things that they were going to do.
Can we get some information? Can we ever have?
You can have it in the pocket.
Okay.
Sure.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we'll continue to look towards the town meeting warrant. We have the appointment of traffic supervisors for the year 2012, 2013. Dean?
Yeah.
Would you like to make a motion, please?
Sure. Make a motion as written and also with the substitutes.
Is there a second?
I'd second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, to appoint the Milford Traffic Supervisors as listed. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? We have an application from the Youth Center for the Jake Gallerani Foundation for a wine and beer license for September 22, 2012, from 5:00 PM to 1:00 AM for food and entertainment.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded, and we'll also be asking to waive the $100 fee on this.
Move.
If that's probably part of the motion.
I'm just trying to make sure I understand who the, who the applicant is. It looks to, well.
Louis, do you know who the applicant is? I see Jake Gallerani Foundation.
It's the Youth Center on behalf of the Jake Gallerani Foundation. It's a little boy from out of town who has a problem.
So, when that happens, my suggestion to the Board is that we have the signature of the individual as a member of the Youth Commission.
In addition, in addition?
Yeah, because ultimately, we're issuing it to the Milford Youth Center, I think. Either that, or we look to clarify the applications.
Sure.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. We also have an application for a one-day license from the Cafe Sorrento for Sunday, September 23, from 1 and 6, in the parking lot to dispense for a clam bun, a clam bake for the Marine Building Fund.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor, any opposed? That's unanimous. We have a recommendation from Mike Santora for a handicap parking space at 5E Mark Drive.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We also have a recommendation from Mike Santora for the installation of a do-not-block sidewalk sign at the sidewalk that leads to 6A Sydney Road.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Louis, you provided us a memorandum regarding the electricity bid. If you could summarize that for us, please.
Well, as I indicated, our current electricity supplier is TransCanada Power Marketing LTD. Contract expires after the first meter read December 1 of this year. What we normally do, I like to go out the bid in the summertime, for some reason, it seems that bids are lower. I discussed it with our folks at U Source. It's an energy service that assists us with procurement. We went out the bid on August 21 with 78 accounts townwide, and again, just the, this isn't a sexy issue, I, I know, but it is an expensive one. These include, this includes the School Department. It's everybody, everybody in town. Our current contract with TransCanada, we pay .08985 per kilowatt hour. We went out the bid and selected Reliant Energy Northeast LLC. The two-year bid is, as you can see, year one, it's .06349 kilowatts per hour. Year two, .06413 kilowatts, according to U Source, and based on the projected kilowatt hours that we'll be spending or utilizing, the Town of Milford should realize a savings of $230,882 in year one, and a two-year savings should be $450,552. I was very happy with how this went. We happened to get it at the right time. It's at least a 20% savings for us, for the School Department, for everybody in town, and that's it.
Good, very good. Excellent. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just, Louis, on this, it says how the future savings would be 230 for a year, 450. Like in the past, when they've said that we would save money, is it reliable? Is it valid?
We're paying almost nine cents right now per kilowatt.
Yeah.
We're going to pay 6.3.
Right.
Savings, it's right there. There's, those are, those are hard savings. Again, it's not sexy, it's not, not exciting, but that's.
Twice now, you've said sexy.
I know, sorry, but that's, that's real savings.
Okay.
That's what Jerry does, dear. Bill?
Yeah, Louis, first of all, excellent work, because this is very helpful in the layout of this. I just want to make sure I understand that column where it's titled "Swing." Every one of the bidders, except for Reliant, had a plus and minus number. That leads me to believe that if costs were to go down, some of that benefit is shared by the community, not just.
What, if, what costs go down?
They, they write it there, right? It's the only one in the column that has, in that column, that has no minus. And I was just curious if that's a, is that a typo, or?
It's got to be a typo. These prices are fixed. There's no going down. This is what we're paying.
And then it begs, begs a question, what's the swing column mean? Maybe it's just my interpretation of what's swing.
Our prices are hard, Bill. That's the bid price on that day, and the funny thing about these, you have to, you have to make your decision right there. It's like pork bellies and such. I mean, there's things up on the board you wouldn't believe.
Not any future.
Has to be instantaneous.
Yeah, I, I guess the question then is, what's the swing column mean?
I think the swing column, oh, I know what the swing column is. They used to cherry pick some of our accounts in the past, all of them, and what they do is they'd leave off a pump station up for the Sewer Department up somewhere, and there was a percentage that, so this year, when we were out, I told them, nothing. I, I got a bill from every account in the Town of Milford. I said, you take all of them, you go out the bid for all of them, or we don't want to participate. Reliant was the only one that took every single one, plus coming in at the low price.
I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the swing column means.
Yeah, I think it's just my confusion. I don't know what it means either.
I'll get you, I'll get it tomorrow, first thing for you.
Okay. But.
But I see the cost per, per kilowatt hour is certainly less than what we're paying today, and less than what all the other bidders came in. The only thing that made me curious is why there's no minus swing in this column for that, for Reliant.
So, we have TransCanada right now, right, Lou?
Yes.
Okay.
And at some point, we've had, the School Department has Direct right now. We've had Constellation in the past.
Does, does Trans, but like you said, TransCanada doesn't do all of our accounts?
They cherry pick a few.
So, that's why it says there is a column, just current accounts served?
Yep.
So, that would have, okay.
Yep. Actually, all of them.
All right, well, in any event, this, this, this advisor service that, that you utilize, they, they recommended to go with the Reliant bid, is that correct?
U Source, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Some more questions?
Nope, nope. That was my only question.
Yeah, motion?
Motion.
Motion made.
I'll second.
Seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have a request from Brian Mackey, the Milford softball head coach, and he would like permission to put up signs throughout the town to recognize the Milford Girls Softball State Championship this past spring, and indicates that he will consult with the Highway Surveyor and the Town Engineer.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we certainly did that for the Legion and their success, and it seemed just as fitting for the Milford Girls Softball Team.
Yeah.
For their achievement.
That's great. Congratulations to them.
Yes.
And motion made, seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? That, too, is unanimous.
Brian, along with that, is there anything on the Nobel Prize winner, Dr. Murray, with the signs?
I think the Historical Commission got those signs up. I think they're up. They're up, yeah.
What about them?
Well, there's one on Route 16 near the hospital. I don't know if the old one near 109 has been restored.
Oh, I haven't seen it.
That's where they used to be. There was one at 16 and 109, and one at 16 near the hospital. But Lynn Lovell was the one that kind of spearheaded that and, you know, got the signs, and actually, you know, I ran the wording by Joe again, just to make sure that he was happy with it, and he was, and lo and behold, at least one is up near the hospital.
Okay, I haven't seen it.
I don't know if there's any more of them.
Okay, good.
Yeah. We have an add-on to the agenda. We have an email from Vic Valenti regarding the trustee vacancy at the library, and apparently the library trustees have voted to fill it for the balance of the term. There were two potential applicants at this time, John Collobon Tempo and Kate Mustriani. So, I took a quick look at the statute again, and it hasn't changed, so what we, now that they've given us notice, I think we have to have a joint meeting with the remaining library trustees, and then fill the vacancy by roll call vote. That meeting needs to occur after one week's notice, and that would fill the position until the next annual election.
Want a motion?
I don't know if we need a motion or just to schedule a trustee.
Schedule one of the September 24 meeting.
Yeah, let's schedule them at our next meeting.
Right, I want, I just want to check to make sure that option's still available to us, because I know we had 30 days to fill that vacation, that, that opening, and where we haven't within the 30-day period, is that still an option available to us? I'd like to get that.
Well, Jerry's here, if you want to ask Jerry.
Now, the 30 days had to do with, if they hadn't provided notice to you of the vacancy within 30 days, your Board would have filled it. vacancy within thirty days, your boards would have filled it, but they did provide notice to you, so now it can only be done by, if at all, by, I mean, a meeting of the joint board, so that option.
So there's no restriction, if we filled it in six months, it would be okay?
It was all valid, sure, yeah. Yeah, the thirty days had to do with, if they hadn't notified you, you could have made an appointment, if they notified you, you lost that.
Now we make the joint, joint appointment.
Now you do a joint, or not at all, right?
Okay.
And just, Vic Valenti came in today and asked about it, and as I told him, there can be more candidates, there can be, there's three, there's three of you folks, there's five of them, there can be multiple candidates, and they have to be nominated by one of the eight, and then you'd start at the top by roll call vote, and the first one gets five wins. Nobody gets five, we carcass again.
Okay. All right, so why don't we notify the trustees and invite them to our next meeting, that we can schedule that, and.
Mr. Chairman, just notation for the minutes, I wanna make sure the minutes reflect council's opinion on that, because there's been, I've been confused about some of the previous guidance as it related to the, that opening up to now, so.
Yeah, it's, it is the statute, it's.
The statute, actually, the statute I read after the, the last meeting where you brought that up.
Yeah.
It was the confusion that I had as related to Jerry's guidance, so now we've got clear, clear guidance that we can fill it after the thirty days, I just wanna make sure that's reflected there.
Okay, so we're all set. That's all we have under new business, Dean, do you have anything under new business?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Bill, do you have anything?
Uh, no, nothing under new business.
Under correspondence, I received a resignation from Michael Stewart of the Capital Improvement Committee. I forwarded Mr. Stewart a response, and then also asked Lou to put it on the agenda for this board to accept.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous, and Lou, please send him a letter also from the board thanking him for his, for his time and his service. United Nations Association of Greater Boston has sent us correspondence indicating that October twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve, is recognized across the country as United Nations Day, and has asked this board for a proclamation, which we've done in the past.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous. We have another report from Mike Santora on the continuing Main Street project, which is pretty evident and self-explanatory. Under items of correspondence, I think there are two related, and I think very significant pieces. Number one deals with the work that Representative Fernandez and Senator Moore did in getting an act to reduce the phosphorus runoff through the House and Senate, and eventually signed by the governor. To accomplish something like this in today's environment is no small feat, and both of them should be congratulated for their efforts. Of course, this has particular meaning to our town, as well as Franklin and Bellingham, because we are under the shadow of potential EPA phosphorus reduction guidelines, which would be quite costly. And that leads me to the second piece of correspondence relating to this, from Town Engineer Mike Santora. He received a notification from GZA indicating that the EPA intends to issue a new revised draft MS four permit for Massachusetts. Mike has indicated that this is potentially favorable news to the town, since the EPA could have opted to simply make revisions to the original draft. But this seems to indicate that the revisions could be substantial in nature, and hopefully, the comments and concerns made by the town of Milford and other communities have been incorporated to reduce compliance costs. There will be a public comment period and public hearings to allow us to review and comment as we did with the original draft, and once that draft is reissued, Mike is going to review it with our stormwater consultant and make recommendations for a comment letter to be submitted on behalf of the town. And again, as I'm sure both of you recall, the projected costs for this regulation were astronomical, upwards of sixty to eighty million dollars, which is, is just not practical in today's environment. I think these two pieces of correspondence highlight the role that this board took in marshaling the resources of Franklin and Bellingham, as well as our very able state representatives, and also the help of the federal elected officials, particularly Congressman Neal and Congressman McGovern, and Senator Kerry's office, which were very, very helpful, I think, in terms of persuading the EPA to take another look at this very, very important issue. So congratulations, I think, to John and Dick, and, and also for everyone else for the work that's been done, but really, it's, it's just another round, and I think we need to remain vigilant, and we, we need to remain attentive to this issue and organized, because I think the organized comment and opposition that we formulated to this original set of regulations.
I think you summed it up well.
So we'll look forward to the revised guidelines and look to, to fight again. Other items that we have in terms of correspondence, we have an application for appointment from Will Kincaid for the Finance Committee, and I believe there's a vacancy on there, pleasure of the board to.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, for Will Kincaid.
I'd certainly second it, he has the background and the capabilities, so.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Will Kincaid to the Finance Committee, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We also received the two executed letters of understanding that are part of the new Comcast license. We had had these, but now we have the executed copies to go along with the permit. We received notice from the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project about a time when spraying interventions may not always be possible, so they're talking about, they post weekly information on the website about spraying and other mosquito activities. We received notice from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission that there's a new caterer's license that is available, annual fee of fifteen hundred dollars, and there are requirements towards that, if anyone's interested, they can contact the Town Administrator's Office or the ABCC directly. We received a request from some individuals that live on Genoa Ave for a streetlight, and Town Administrator sent that on for opinion from our Town Engineer and Police Chief. Those are all of the items that I have, is there anything else that you'd like to discuss?
No, I think it covered everything, Mr. Chairman.
Covered it.
Bill? Okay, we do have an executive session for a land proposal, and also collective bargaining for the Police Association.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session, roll call vote, Dean?
Aye.
Bill?
I also agree.
I, too, vote in the affirmative, we will not be returning to open session. Thank you, and good night.